All right, can I just get the Can I just get the board members to just make sure you guys are okay to to speak right now?
I'm fine.
Okay, could we just get a quick check? I just want to make sure everybody's okay.
I'm here. Oh wait, mine says you cannot mute unmute yourself. Because the host muted you.
No, you're good. I hear you, Chris.
Yeah, me too.
Ron, can, are you okay?
There, I got it.
Okay.
You have, I think you have to do it. Do me a favor, mute me again and let me see if I can unmute myself.
Well, you can mute yourself, can't you, Ron?
I can.
Yeah, that's just, that's what we'll. Nancy Anne, Dr. Harner.
Can we hear, make sure. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Anita.
Okay.
Nancy Anne?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Harner?
Got me.
John Kern? Ron, I see a thumbs down. Kaylin, can we hear you?
There was a setting of some sort that I dealt with at a meeting previously. If the host mutes me, there's, if I, if I ever mute myself again, I'm locked to you. There's some setting you gotta undo. So like if I mute myself right now, I might not be able to unmute.
Okay, unfortunately, I'm not seeing a way to override that for for us. So let's just. All right, let's just keep the 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 members that are speaking unmuted and just will just maintain silence because to keep everybody off and us talking, it's going to be problematic. So I'm unmuting everybody.
I think having the setting like you did before, where everybody was self muted. Would probably be.
Yeah, Keith, the unfortunate thing is with this platform, though, to to prevent others from doing that, it's all or none in this situation, so.
So if you mute yourself, you'll never be able to get back on.
I think we just maintain silence.
Jeff is with us.
Okay, so I think.
I think we still need to unmute a few folks.
All right, who who do we need?
Mitch and Brian and Jen.
Jenny should be good.
Keith is off. Dr. Harner, can you unmute yourself?
All right, so once I unmute, you just stay unmuted for for the duration and just will just maintain silence.
Mitch is still off, Brian is still off.
I think I'm back on.
Yeah, just leave it, leave it off and we'll just.
I thi- I I think we should just let it let the setting before where we commute and ask everybody to mute. If there's a problem, then we go back to this way.
Is everybody okay with that? I can do that.
Ooh. Well, can I mute? Can I mute myself?
If you do, you may not be able to get back on.
You, so. Everybody, I'll let you, I'll let you guys choose so we can undo the setting and hope for it to run smoothly with people being able to unmute and mute themselves. We don't have a whole lot of people here.
I'd like to be able to mute myself and the reason is is I'm, the kitchen's next door. It's gonna, my family is loud.
Maybe we should start trusting and if if need be, you can adjust, Joe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make an announcement to the general public.
Okay, so you're good now. Somebody want to test that?
Testing, it worked. Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
I'm, I can unmute, I'm good.
Works.
Got it. Yep.
All right, I'm just going through and getting video stopped here.
We found Jeff.
We did find Jeff. All right, did I, do I have any other videos still running that shouldn't be running? I think we are, I think we're good.
Should I call the meeting to order?
I think we're good, Ryan.
Okay. Anybody not ready? All right. Good evening, I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. And the first item of business that's important for us to go ahead and act on is the recommended action to suspend Board Policy 006.1, which restricts the frequency and number of board members participating in a public meeting via electronic communication as well as the restriction that prohibits the Board President to preside at any public meeting via electronic communication up through April 22nd, 2020. So we may have to do this for the duration of however long we will have to do these meetings. So can I get a motion to move forward?
So moved.
Can you please state your name when you say the motion?
I second it. It's moved.
Brian seconded.
It'll be a roll call vote. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Weed?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Mr. Reimers?
Yes.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, well, next, we will move on to our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Nation under God.
Indivisible, indivisible. Liberty and justice.
Justice sprawl.
All right, um, next item, we're going to do a roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Kern?
Here.
Mr. McCucci?
Here.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Here.
Ms. Weed?
Here.
Mr. Reimers?
Here.
Mr. Spear?
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple of announcements before we start our meeting. Just due to the pandemic, I did want to have a few words I wanted to share with the community. So thanks for all those in the community who have joined us tonight or who may be viewing this board meeting at a later time. As your board and administration, we recognize this pandemic has affected us greatly. Many teachers are wondering when they're going to get to see their students in a classroom setting once again. Students are missing their teachers and friends. Our graduating seniors are missing their last days of school prom and precious memories with friends. Parents are wondering how long this may go on. And some are in cases frantically trying to figure out how they're going to manage working from home and supporting their children's learning. Some parents are worried about not having an income at all. And as we move through this journey, I'm hopeful that we can show each other a little bit of compassion and be there for one another. When hearing the news that Governor Wolf decided to close schools for the rest of the year, I'm certain that was difficult for some. But that doesn't mean our learning has stopped for our school district. As the governor said, our schools are more than academics. They're sources of hope, inspiration, stability, and inclusion. I want to recognize and thank our administration for quickly coordinating a plan to bring our learning to an online environment. I also want to thank our teachers and staff for being flexible and developing online instruction. And lastly, to all the parents out there, give yourself a little bit of grace in these times. We're not always going to get it perfect, but we're doing our best. And I can promise you that our administration and board is working hard to give our students the best possible education despite these challenges. A few other announcements. On March 5th, the board met for comprehensive planning in an executive session to discuss contracts with personnel. Our board also met weekly to hear presentations on the state of our district, but no deliberations took place. I also wanted to make the public aware of an important item that has been temporarily removed from the agenda. In light of the announcement today from Governor Wolf advising us that all schools will be closed for the rest of the school year, we felt it prudent to delay the vote for the preliminary budget. So that was on the agenda for tonight. We decided to remove that in order to develop a greater understanding of how tax revenues will be impacted in the near future. So rather than take that vote today, we will instead vote in the May 14th board meeting. We should have some new information at that time and that will give us a better picture on how we move forward. The next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Jackson, so moved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say, oh wait, do we have to do roll call? I'm sorry, Anita.
No, you don't have to do roll call for the minutes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're going to move on to our general public comment and I know that this is a little bit different, that we did take some of those ahead of time and we're going to have either Anita or Terry read those aloud.
Terry, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, the first public comment is from Denise Minkoff from Quakertown Borough. And she said, thank you for taking my question. As a parent of a high school senior who is completely crushed, I know many senior parents have several questions about all of the previously planned senior activities. When and how can we get capping gowns and honor society tassels? Most importantly, what is the plan for a graduation ceremony since we most likely will not be able to proceed with the original 616 ceremony at Stabler? What about all of the other activities such as senior prom, senior picnic, senior awards ceremony, yearbooks, and any other senior related milestones? Is the school trying to have makeup days for all of these? I just want to note that I am willing to help in any way that I can and would be able to rally up as many senior parents who are also willing to help to give these kids a proper send off. Thank you, Denise Minkoff.
Thank you, Denise, for sharing that. And I do, I do want to state just upfront that during public comment, it's not usually the platform where we do Q and A. But I would like to make sure we follow up with our residents. So if our administration can just take some notes on some of the questions that are being asked and follow up on those questions to the community.
Yes, ma'am, if I may.
Sure.
One, um, Matt V, our principal at the high school, has been working hand in glove with the senior class already because they knew that the prom and senior trip and some other things weren't going to be taking place. We'll get all that information out, the game plan on, over the next couple of weeks. Graduation ceremony at Stabler most likely won't happen, given that we're not allowed to come back to school at all and that would not make sense to have that there. But that has not been finalized. We'll get all that information out to the, out to the senior class and their parents. And it's going to be working together. A lot of these activities the seniors want will be after graduation when we can come back together again and have a great celebration for them. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Dr. Harner. And go ahead and read our next public comment.
Okay, the next public comment is from Shannon Heaton from Richland Township. Good afternoon, I was hoping that during the board meeting this evening, we could address the following questions pertaining to seniors. Will there be a graduation ceremony for seniors? If not, how will they receive their diploma? Will senior prom be held at a later date or canceled? Thank you in advance, Shannon Heaton.
I'm sure there are going to be more information that will be followed up on in regards to that as we're working out all the details.
And that's the end of the public comment that I have.
All right, um, I also wanted to make any community members aware that we will have another public comment at the end of this meeting. And if you would like to make a public comment, you can feel free to complete the form and it may be too late for you to do that. So you can also email your comments to Terry and her, she is Executive Secretary to the Superintendent. Her email address is T as in Terry, S as in her last name, San Angelo, and then A N A, wait, sorry, T S A N A N G E L O at Q C S D dot org. And we're asking to keep those to 750 words or less. And you can feel free to send that in. And we will, we'll get to that at the end of the meeting. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next item of business, which is our superintendent report, Dr. Harner.
Good evening, everyone, and to all those in the audience that I cannot see. Good to see you all. First up on the superintendent's report is the awarding information from Senator Menchon of our $40,000 safety grant. The majority of the grant will be paying for our building inspections, looking at the cap of possible capital improvements that we would need safety wise for several of our buildings. If you recall, we've already had one done for the sixth grade center and Richland Elementary. Bob Lee, Officer Bob Lee is conducting others, but one of the board goals this year is to complete all those inspections. I'm not sure we'll be able to meet that goal due to the virus. But we're part of them, the grant monies to pay for that. And it's also to pay for covers for our fire alarms. If you've been in our buildings lately, especially at the high school, you'll see a little cover on each one of the fire alarms. It's the alarm for the alarm. So it's a local sounding noise. So before a student gets, or anybody who wants to pop an alarm, they they own it as soon as they pop the plastic off. So it's one of those things and that's what the $45,000 will pay for. Second part of my superintendent report, I have in in the board docs a document several pages long of, of in the format of our board goals for the year. But I, first off, I'd like to do celebrations. I I'd like to thank the district office team over the last, the first couple of weeks of being out. And even before that, Officer Teaching and Learning, that team got to, right away, starting getting us prepared for a virtual environment. Anticipating that we'd be out a lot longer than just the initial two weeks. Mr. Cuzo and the tech team did a phenomenal job of rallying the resources and along with the elementary principals, making sure all of our 2,000 and plus elementary students went home with a Chromebook that they never had took home before. That was all done in a matter of hours on that March 13th. And ever since the students went back to school last Tuesday, we've had a computer exchange where over 40 computers are being exchanged, making, making sure every student who has a computer that's not working has a working computer. And Joe's team twice a week are in the office keeping their distance. Then their desks are probably 20 feet apart anyway. But keeping their distance, repairing the computers that we're bringing back in. Our connectivity is amazing out within the district. But there's some students that we have not maintained contact with yet or achieved contact with. And a lot of students without connectivity. The Q C E F set aside, I believe, you can nod, by the nod of your head, Mr. Jackson, $12,000 for us to buy, purchase hotspots. The initial news was it would take about three or four days. That's when we ordered them a week and a half ago or a week ago. Now it's four weeks. So the point may be moot for this academic year for hotspots, but we're going to be prepared for it anyway. Well, last, the week before, also two weeks ago, when we worked on a continuity of education plan, it was a bottom up, top down collaborative effort across all 600 employees. They had an opportunity to participate in the development of that process. And F A Q was was created for all of our employees. I think we had 163 teachers submitted questions that lasted 83 pages of answers that the team put together. 83 pages of answers. A lot of those questions were the same or about the same thing. But we wanted to make sure we honored every employee, so those questions were there. Also, the Office of Teaching and Learning put together professional development opportunities over the last couple of weeks. Yesterday, I participated in the New Teachers Academy with 45 teachers of ours. It was amazing, the feedback. All the things that we've, a lot of things we wanted to get done virtually and online through our Canvas and Seesaw program is now getting done, that done. And it's, and it's one of the silver linings of our program. Other things. We have our schedule for the, during the spring, during the springtime here for our instruction, it's a four day work week for students and a five day work week for all other employees except for this week and next week due to the holiday. And Friday is our professional development days, which is an outstanding opportunity for us to to take our support staff to a whole new level. One of my personal goals, I know Mr. Cuzo, our tech director is is all excited about it, along with everyone else on the staff is getting, doing our best to getting our support staff Google certified. And also providing that opportunity for some of our faculty members who haven't done that. So that's really neat. We've taken care of all of our employees, making sure that they are, they're being taken care of. And and right now, if you see in the report back on page, the end, the bottom of page one, it talks about connectivity with their students. That's probably, Mr. Spear, you had that question for me, ready, you were going to ask it. If I didn't answer it, in the report, you can see that we're at the, at the elementary level. After the first week, we've connected with 81% of our elementary students. We've connected with about, I'd say at the high school level, we're as high as 90% of our students where we've connected. But are, who's participating in the high school courses? A lot of our students who told me personally during a Google hangout I had last, last Friday with about 15 high school students. They're, they're picking and choosing where they're, have the big AP exams or what they're, what they're going to complete for the rest of the school year since their grade was over at the end of the third marking period. So overall, participation rate has been high. We're still very much interested in making sure that we're feeding our students who ordinarily get fed at at school with a breakfast and a lunch because of their, their personal needs at home, that they get fed. Our, our numbers are going up. Not, not fast enough, but we're providing food services at three of our schools, PAF, the high school and Richland Elementary School. And that's about it. Does anyone have any questions on the superintendent's report as written or provided?
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your report. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the next item of business, which is our standing committee reports. And so, so some committees didn't get a chance to meet, but we wanted to make sure we included any committee reports that, that people wanted to mention. So we're going to start with our facilities committee, Mr. Spear.
All right, um, we didn't meet formally, but we have had some discussions with the contractors at Nighting, where we are going to probably have to adjust those schedules and those deadlines coming up in the future. Probably in the next couple of meetings, we'll get those numbers. And I also wanted to mention what a good job Joe Cuzo was doing with his curbside device repair center. And it was actually an article in the PSBA about that today. So I guess that's part of the facilities and I I guess a lot of parents are taking it, or kids are taking advantage of that. And I think that's a really good thing, as well as the lunches that are still being, being provided at our buildings at PAF, Richland and High School. And that's it for my report.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And just one thing I guess I'll add for those of you out there in the audience, we, the Nighting renovation project was put on hold temporarily. But we are happy that we're at least partially back on track. So that's, that's good news. All right, um, Mr. Jackson, you have the Bucks County IU as well as the Education Foundation and the legislative report.
Always a pleasure to share my insights with you all. The intermediate unit met on March the 17th. That was soon after the shutdown of the schools. So the IU is in the same predicament as all other school districts are in trying to teach their individuals virtually. They have a bit of a unique distinction, bit of a unique handicap in that many of their students need to have physical contact in order to learn. There's people who need to have physical therapy. There's people, um, you know, deaf or other physically challenged people. So the IU is managing it well, but keep them in mind there. I included in the agenda there a copy of the actions taken at the last board meeting. That's the extent of the report for the IU. The Ed Foundation, Dr. Harner alluded to this. It was brought to our attention that while internet access is given free often by providers to low income and needy individuals, the actual physical hotspot device is typically not included in that. And the need to purchase that was brought to our attention. And as Dr. Harner alluded to, the Ed Foundation made available $12,000 to purchase hotspots to those students in our community who otherwise would not have the ability to connect to the internet. And that's an ongoing process right now. And again, we're hoping to have that make an impact before the end of the school year. That, the, that's, the Ed Foundation is also making, I believe, enough of an impact that we're starting to see more donations coming in, which is a great thing. One of the things we did last year was provide, practically, this was the second year in a row, we provided a book for every first grader to encourage reading. There was discussion on Wednesday, just yesterday morning, we had a meeting, there was discussion that perhaps we should expand that to every second grader as well. That's under consideration for next year. That concludes the Ed Foundation report. As to the legislative report, we all know that today's news out of Harrisburg was the closing of all schools under the direction of the Secretary of Education for the remainder of this calendar, this school year. I hesitate to offer anything more legislatively because things are so fluid and happening all the time. I would just encourage all board members to take a look at your PSBA daily updates, which provide an ongoing running of things that are happening. Dr. Harner is very good about going through his copy of that and forwarding informative stories out to all the board members in case they don't see it themselves. So just do keep an ear and eye to the legislative reports that come across your desk because things are changing every day. And that is the extent of my reports.
Thank you, sir. All right, our final report is the Upper Bucks County Technical School, Mr. Akmanowicz.
Um, we had our first online meeting last month. Reporting on that, everything went pretty well. The Tech Schools Nursing Program donated a quantable sizable amount of PPE that we had on hand to St. Luke's. So I just want to say thank you, the staff for that and the students. New course offerings in partnership with Rutgers are going to be coming.
New course offerings in partnership with Rutgers are going to be coming in relation to our new AgTech program. And then finally, the last thing I just want to mention is, of course, the suspension of regular services. The continuity of coverage plan was rolled out on March 23rd that is available on the website, and changes are provided as needed. And if you have any questions about the Tech School, go directly to the website or contact them. And that completes my report today.
Before we, Mr. Akmanowicz, could I add a little bit?
Absolutely.
Dr. Hoffman, could you talk about the, the, the process we used this year to get more students, their first, second choice, and more students in Tech School?
Sure. So we had a record number of students from Quakertown asking to have spots at the Technical School next year, which is very exciting, but unfortunately, it also means we have a number of students who are currently on the waiting list without a spot. We did meet this year as a group of assistant superintendents, so Nancy, Anna, myself, and then the two other funding districts, met to do the Tech School placement so that we could determine what we believe was the most fair way to allow students, the most number of students to get their first choice that we've had in recent years. We also were able to have some great conversation with our colleagues over in Palisades, who did not need all of their spots, and open up some additional spots for our students, which is wonderful. And then we traded some spots with Penridge in some programs where we didn't need as many spots and, and they needed, and vice versa. So I actually, before the screening, was working on the list of Tech Spots, so it's right here, we have, we're down to a waiting list of 22 students, which is exciting, because we were up over 50 last week that were still waiting for spots. So we are, we are well on our way to having our highest number of participants at the Tech School, which is very exciting.
Thank you so much for all that. I forgot to mention it. I appreciate you reminding me, Dr. Harner.
Thank you, thank you for those reports. All right, we are going to move on to the items for Board Action. And the item, the recommended action is to approve, to provide, rather, the superintendent and our chief operating officer with signatory authority to enter into contracts and other agreements as may be necessary to provide support and assistance to Quakertown Community School District educational programs and business operations during this time of mandated school closure. And just for board members' understanding, you will still vote on these items, and they are going to be reviewed with the president and vice president. It's just in order for us to keep and maintain things, keep things on track between board meetings due to this unprecedented time. So can I get a motion to vote on this item?
So moved, Spear.
Second, Akmanowicz.
Discussion. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is our Fiscal Agenda. This is for the approval of the February 2020 Boucher and James Bill List, and also the approval of the March 2020 Boucher and James Bill List. I'll need to get a motion to vote on those items.
So moved, Jenny.
I'll second it, Mitch.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any, anyone opposed?
Mr. Jackson, bestines.
One abstention, Mr. Jackson. Motion carries with one abstention. Next is our Fiscal Consent Agenda. We have the award for one-year extension for audit services, approving the, the levy school bus addendum under Act 13, approved February 2020 budget transfers, approval of the February 2020 bills list, approval of treasurer's report for February 2020, approval of March 2020 bills list, approval of March 2020 budget transfers, approval of the water filtration and service rental agreement with Quench USA for Trump Bowersville Elementary School, and refunding of spring pay to play. Can I get a motion to vote on those items?
Motion made by Mr. Jackson.
I'll second.
Who's that?
I'll second, it's Brian.
Okay. All right, discussion.
All right, I, I did want to make one, I guess, public comment here, just about all these bills that do still need to be paid, along with these contracts that still need to be maintained in all this. It, it's just showing how the school district does still have to pay all of these bills. The school district is still paying for busing. The school district is still paying all of their bills on time, all of their maintenance, all of their, all of their contracted workers are being paid through this whole shutdown. So I just wanted to make a note of that. I know some people in the public have been saying, oh, I guess we're going to see a lot of savings, and I was just mentioning that maybe not so much.
That's actually a really, really good point, Chris. A lot of people are under the assumption that, you know, we're saving a ton of money as a district, but we, we really are still maintaining operations, just in terms, I shouldn't say operations, payments to our staff members. So there's not as much savings there as you would think.
I, I'd also like to add that our staff members, our teachers, our support staff have done an incredible job over the last couple of weeks of taking what they've never prepared themselves for, for the most part. There's a couple, maybe less than, less than 10, that have taught online before. Many have taken classes online, and, and you know, you have 387 teachers that moved their whole practice into a virtual environment, and then you have aides out there that are now helping those teachers in those virtual environments. So I'd like to commend that, them, and thank you, Chris and Kaylin, for mentioning, there's a lot of stuff going on behind the curtain, and it's quite remarkable how well given the stresses that everyone has from this pandemic.
Yeah, I wasn't even mentioning the teachers, because the teachers haven't stopped working, whereas maybe some of the contracted workers have, but we are still paying them. The teachers are working as hard, if not harder, than they were before the shutdown.
Yeah, I can only imagine our teachers out there who also have little ones at home, who, they're trying to manage homeschooling their kids, and then also continue teaching our students. So it's challenging. That's why I say we got to give each other some empathy and compassion right now, and try to, just be patient if things are not working out exactly as we would hope, but I am super impressed. My two kids' teachers are doing, they're doing phenomenal, and it's been somewhat of a, I guess, one silver lining is I'm getting a really close look at their instruction much more than I ever had before, and I had that much more of an appreciation for it. Okay, back on track, so I, any other discussion?
So we, we don't appreciate any savings from, from the, you know, certain things that we're not, we're like, we're not using any buses, I understand, paying. Is there a portion of that contract that's maintenance, Zach?
Zach, would you answer what, what we have going on there?
Yes, sure. So the contract that you see there, I worked on with Jeff Garten, it is incomplete, the language should remain the same. You'll notice the cost reduction line item is blank. Dr. Harner and I have been negotiating with Warren Levy on a reduction on our last couple of months of bills, that even if we paid the staff and their fixed costs, we would like to see a reduction in things like, if you're not running your buses, you're not going to be paying for supplies and maintenance of the buses, the extended life of those buses, things of that nature. So we're still trying to negotiate that number. They did give a proposal, we gave a counter. You know, we're still going through that process right now.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, it's, sounds fair, more fair to me, anyway.
Yeah, and the, just so you're, you're aware, the fuel is actually paid for by the district, and we lease a tank from Levy, so there would be no negotiating with Levy on fuel costs.
Time to top it off. Gas is cheap.
Any other discussion?
Maybe they could do like grocery runs for people in the community or shut-ins. Imagine how much you could carry on a bus.
Creative. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're going to move on to our Facilities Consent Agenda, items for vote, the Nighting Elementary Renovation in addition project, there's a couple of change orders in there, and the approval agreement with Criterion Laboratories. And just a reminder, this is us providing a hygienist who will perform temperature screening on our employees and subcontractors for the construction site. Can I get a motion to approve, or excuse me, to vote on the Facilities Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Back in, Akmanowicz.
Discussion.
That's a steep cost for two hours of work.
I know I'm doing the wrong, we're, we're all doing the wrong job here, no, okay.
It is a steep cost. They went out for a couple of proposals, and we snatched this one up before they start being snatched up themselves and don't have time for our project.
Yeah, that's the problem, who wants to do two hours of work?
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is our Human Resources Consent Agenda. We have a few items, professional staff, confidential staff, support staff, unit pay, and game workers. Can I get a motion to vote on the Human Resources Consent Agenda?
So moved, Jenny.
Second, Mr. Jackson.
Discussion.
Can you, can someone explain to me what a game worker is? I guess, I'm not, just want to be more clear, Scott, what that is, it's a new term to me.
Someone who competes in EA Sports.
I could explain what that is. It's the individuals at games that, for example, take the tickets at the entry. We have individuals that might act as like a quasi-security, monitoring what kids are doing, that kind of a thing. They might work some of the events at track, firing the, the gun, you know, kind of a thing.
Right, and, and we're, are we hiring this person?
What we do is we, it's already an employee of the district. We maintain a list of game workers that Sylvia pulls from. This just allows this individual to be on that list. Obviously, there is no need for a game worker right now, but it just puts him on the list. He's already an employee of the district.
Got it.
It's just a different pay for that, for that work.
I, I understand.
So one of the things that's important to, that, in a lot of folks' minds, where, where does the PIA double A go? The last time they had a meeting was last week, and they were just still putting on hold the, the championships for winter sports and spring sports with the governor's decision. That, it's, it could be, so to speak, a game changer for our seasons this year, don't know, and we won't probably be told for another week or still.
So I, I did have a question, then, since we're refunding the pay-to-play for all the sports, I guess all the spring sports and probably the winter sports, maybe the whole year. I wasn't sure where, how deep those refunds went. Does that also mean that we are still going to pay these stipends to the coaches, or, or these salaries to the coaches for the spring sports that are just not going to take place at all?
Sure, I'll handle that question. One, the, part of the Act 13, Senate Bill 751, is to anything that was in place on March 13th, that was a commitment to paying all those employees. Also, in, in Quakertown, over the last six years, part of my board goals, my first couple of years, was to improve the quality of our athletic program, since we had only a, a 20% win rate across all of our sports. And you know, wrestling, it normally wins, so you can imagine, it just kind of falls on a couple of sports holding up that 20%. So we've come a long way, and, and my expectation of coaches is to work with their program year-round. So that they may get paid during that season, or you're proven for that season, but they're worth doing a lot of offseason work, making sure that their, their players are academically doing well, being mentors besides being coaches, and getting them in the gym. So I think that's an important commitment. And moving forward for the summer, fall, don't know where that's going to go yet. That's a big topic among superintendents today in our, our, now, every other day chat. It used to be a daily chat, now we're, things are getting kind of normal in the virtual world, so it's every other day, but that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item of business, our Policy and Programs Consent Agenda. We're going to vote on approving a contract between Harvard Lehigh Intermediate Unit and Quakertown Community School District for intergovernmental special education services for the 2020, 2021 school year. Also, the approval of the Policy Committee Recommendations, and there's a list of those, if you go in and take a look at the board docs, and we've been discussing these. Lastly, is the approval of the contract between Sweet Stevens Katz and Williams LLP Legal Services Consultation. And I'll need a motion to vote on the Policy and Programs Consent Agenda.
So moved.
I'll second, Brian.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we have some information items for the board. There's an SRO report there, suspension report, SSC memorandum, a statement of financial interest form, reminder that, and I'm talking to myself, we need to complete the statement of financial interest form. Board members, send that over to Anita by April 23rd. There is actually an attachment in there, if you go and take a look. Also, the QCSD Continuity of Education Plan. Food for students during the closure. So we are feeding, and, and Dr. Harner, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we are feeding any child who needs a meal at the three different schools, right?
That is correct, ma'am. We're feeding private school students, a homeschool students, anybody.
And
Any child.
So just to review that for the public, when they, when they arrive, what does that look like for them?
What, what's it look like? They, they're there to pick up a brown bag from our food service workers that are at those three sites.
So they will just, they'll, they will walk inside the building and just grab and go?
Our, our folks are right in the foyer and right inside the front door, so going inside the building is maybe a step if they go inside at all.
Perfect, all right. And next item here, just tech support for students and staff. Now, we reviewed that Now, we reviewed that, but we've established a process to limit the interactions and still maintain our devices. And Joe and his team has been doing a really great job on that. So you can submit a form and that when you arrive for your appointment, you will just pull up to this digital sign in front of the high school and the team will come to you. Curbside support, can't get better than that. And for staff, there's mandatory training. And we'll be utilizing that time during the shut, during the shutdown to work on professional development. The mandatory training and support staff includes Act 126 Child Abuse Recognition and Reporting. Act 71 Youth Suicide Awareness, Sexual Harassment in the Workplace, as well as Alice Organizational Certification Training. Next item on the agenda is new business. Is there any new business from any of the board members? No new business, but I just want to say, none of us are as cool as John Kern right now. He is always on the treadmill whenever we do these meetings. And John, how many steps do you get in a day doing that?
Let's see, I'm up about 10 and a half miles today and 31 and a half thousand steps.
Insane.
I see you took off your tie too, got too hot, I guess, huh?
A little warm.
It's funny, he wouldn't even wear a tie to the meeting, but now that we're on camera, he threw a tie on. It was funny.
Yeah, that's what, it's, he needs to bring some levity to.
There's probably 60 people here and I think half of them just, you know, dropped in to see if John was still walking or not.
Nice.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Would you inform the, I'd like to inform the public about going into executive session after the board meeting to talk about contract negotiations?
Yes, good point. And I do want to just inform the board to take a look at your email. There's a separate link as we will be doing, going into executive session directly after this meeting. As promised, we have a final
Are we staying on this?
No, there's a, Dr. Harn, there's a different link that sent an email?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Check your email for a new Zoom link.
Maybe
We have
I just got mine. It's, it's in there.
Like, we can do a five-minute break in between or something like that, just to let people.
Yeah, yes, it's scheduled for eight o'clock.
Okay, cool.
You want to put the tie back on?
Just for you, just for you Brian. Alright, as promised, we have a final public comment. Did we have anyone sign up for a public comment?
Yes, I do have one more public comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, alright. This is from Alexandra, and I'm going to try and say her last name the best I can, Dayu Sakina. She is from Richland Township and she said, "Good evening. Assuming that the school resumes regular operations in the beginning of next school year, would students be taught the curriculum of the fourth marking period of the current academic year? Or do they go directly into the next grade level course? Thank you for supporting all of the students throughout these trying times."
Yeah, I handle that one. And then I'll offer it off to Dr. Hoffman for more specifics. Next year, we will, we will not be holding anybody back. There'll be no, students will be moving on to next grade. All of our, our kindergartners will become first graders, our 11th graders will become our new senior class, all the way through. I will say, I've been reading the research out there. There's a Harvard professor by the name of Dr. James Kim that I've talked to the board about and I forwarded some other information about it. A normal, in a normal summer, a child over 10 weeks loses 20% of their reading skills from kindergarten through first grade, or through fifth grade, and 27% of their math skills during the summer months, those 10 weeks off. We're only, we've only taught classes for 75% of the school year. Now, with our optional curriculum right now, with a very high participation rate, but it's still not like a teacher in the classroom. So if you figure the amount of work that we're going to have to go back and review the scaffold and then move on, but we will not be holding any students back. Dr. Hoffman, would you like to jump on that one and give a little bit more specificity to it?
Sure, so just finding out today that the closure extends for the remainder of the school year, obviously, we haven't had a chance to go through all of the curriculum document for every content area. But in, in most cases, what our plan is, is to look at the core content areas first and then move into the elective areas, determine what content based on the state standards has not yet been covered. Once we have the information of what has not yet been covered, we will look and determine whether or not that is already scheduled to be covered again. So some topics maybe show up a couple of times during a student's school career and some are only taught once. So we want to prioritize things that, for instance, we would have missed at the end of third grade and won't show up again for those students. And then we'll be working to integrate that material wherever possible into upcoming classes. So a little bit of, of work needs to go into that to make it happen. Thankfully, we did move to Atlas Curriculum Mapping Software as one of our board goals for this year, which is very exciting and it's almost done. And actually, this time has allowed us to spend some more time on that with teachers to get their curriculum in there. And that really allows us to find all of the spots where we, where we can take the curriculum and move it into other spots to make sure that, that students don't have those gaps in their instruction. Go ahead Chris.
Yeah, yeah, I had a quick question then. Will we be looking to also adjust the end date for our regular students? I know our seniors are still graduating at the same time. But, you know, we had spoke before about if, if they came back in May, that we may go toward, to the end of June. Or are we going to look into also maybe starting next year a little bit early? These are questions I had from the public earlier that maybe we could address.
Big picture, I think a lot of it is going to be some guide, we'll receive guidance from the State Department of Education from Secretary Rivera. And, and then figure out what a lot of the other districts are thinking about doing, about scheduling and calendars and things like that. As you know, as a GOC member at the tech school, Mr. Spear, you know that we have to be almost identical in calendar days as the other two school districts for the use of that facility. So there's a lot of variables out there. There's other, other, other people talking about year-round school and having gaps in, in, and having trimesters or something like that, just in case we have this, this virus coming back for a second round or a third round. So there's a lot of discussion out there, but nothing at all, and it's crystal clear.
Okay.
Alright. Yeah, I'm sure we'll, everything's changing so quickly. We should have, of course, a lot more answers as the weeks come by. Alright, let's move on to our last item before adjournment. Now, this is our, the dates for our board meetings, upcoming board meetings. Now, Dr. Harn, are we taking, going into May at this point? Because right now, it's still listed April 23rd meeting.
It is the, the board call. I would think that May 14th, that's when we would be prepared to bring a budget back with a lot of the details that we know that is going to be changing here in the next couple of weeks from the state. The impact of the governor's decision and also the financial discussions that are already taking place in the State House. So, May, May 14th, I, I don't believe we'll have anything for the board to decide in between now and then unless it could be a, a change order. But that would be something for the resolution that you approved tonight that I would talk to you and Ron about.
Would we be able to, when's the latest that we could cancel the meeting? Just wondering if there was for some, like, should we, should we keep it on there?
That's a good idea. That's a good idea. Leave it on, leave it on there and then we, let's, let's talk about it and if anything comes up, we can use it.
Alright, so let's plan to keep the April 23rd meeting on there with the understanding that we may not need to utilize that time, but if we do, it's there, never know.
One of the things that's real important for the community to understand, that everything we're getting from the state guidance and whatnot, discussions, we're putting up there on our website, Mr. Communications Director there, and Mr. Gary has done a fabulous job of bringing together all of our mental health support, all the, all the planning, all the FAQs, all kinds of information for our community to know. So between that and maybe another board meeting where we have this, where the public has access to ask questions or at least put their concerns on the table, let's, let's see how that goes.
I have to say, we're getting a lot of participation in this meeting today. That, maybe there's something, something good with this, this Zoom. People feel like they can stream and
Nothing good on Netflix.
They've already gone through all their favorite shows.
I thought we were on Netflix.
Alright guys, again, I just really want to thank our administration for their leadership during this difficult time. Our teachers, our staff members who are really working hard. I keep hearing some, from so many teachers, they really miss their kids. And a lot of the kids are missing their friends and, you know, this is not an easy time, but we're all in the same boat, we're doing the same thing. We're going to figure this out one day at a time. And I appreciate everyone who's tuned in this evening. And with that said, have a great evening everyone. And for the board members, I'll see you guys in executive session.
You need a motion, you need a motion to adjourn.
Can we do that in five minutes then? Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved, Mr. Jackson.
Second, Mr. Kern.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Alright, so see you guys in about five minutes in executive session.
Good job guys.
Alrighty. Thanks guys.
Bye everybody.
Bye.
See you later.